The, uh, um, just a letter from Abe that Karen had sent everyone about the renewal. Must have something. Okay. I can, what about the Excel spreadsheet? Maybe that's a better. This one? No?
Um. Not to be recorded. Now that I think about it, probably, it probably is somewhat a side reason.
Alright, well, I'll let you do it then.
Okay, so the main objective of this meeting is to say which two plans that we're going to be offering.
Can you use the mic, Karen?
Um, so the main objective of this meeting is for the council to decide which two plans we're going to offer to our employees. It's sort of, you know, over the past, like, ever since I've been here, we've offered plan, these two plans are similar to them before we had, when we had a medical trust. And right now, leaving the trust is not an option, nor do I encourage it to be an option. Because we have a three-year contract with them, and I don't remember which year we're in, but it is a three-year contract, so, and it takes some time to get out of that, that's we decide.
It costs us more to get another one anyway.
Yeah, so my hope is that tonight, we will say yes, go ahead with what we've historically, what we've been offering our employees. And then, um, if it's the council's desire to take a look at making some changes to the health plan, or how it's set up, or the employee contributions, that we, um, take some time over the next year and, um, put together a, um, committee, can't think of the word, of, uh, people from, you know, full-time employees from different departments to come together and discuss what would be reasonable, um, what maybe would be some options, and put those together, and then present it to the council, maybe in June, a little bit before budget time, so we have some time to, um, you know, kind of digest and make a decision. So I don't, I don't want to lead your decision, um, I realize that we're under a little bit of pressure this year, um, as far as the budget. We've been able to lighten some loads, as well as more information comes in about, you know, future income for 2021, but at the same time, it's just such an off-year, I can't even begin to say this is definitely what it's going to be. So, again, just wanted to be cautious on the income side, we know what our expenses most likely will be, and hopefully we'll, we'll meet somewhere in the middle.
Karen, just, I'm just sort of pointing, um, order of information. But I think, uh, I don't disagree with you at all in terms of putting together a committee to look at this. It has to be a management committee, otherwise you get into what could potentially be union negotiations. So if you have employees negotiating benefit packages.
What my, I'm not advocating that, but I'm advocating, you know, if we want to take a look at, um, our employees contributing more.
Yes. I just, we just have to be careful about how, how we put that together. I don't disagree with you at all.
Okay, that's fine, I, again, it's just a committee, whoever it ends up being, whether appointed or however, but I don't think it's, I don't think that it, it should just be a council decision, it, it needs some more.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of a committee studying it over a period of some months, with someone from council representing the council and kind of expressing our concerns about cost, et cetera. And maybe a couple of the supervisors, yourself, Jonathan, because then if he, if the employees own it and they understand our concerns, maybe they'll come to us with a proposal that we don't have to slap at them, kind of thing.
Again, I just think we have to be careful about the collective bargaining, it has to be management that is involved in that decision.
Okay, so, well, then the time for me, I mean, are you thinking like department supervisors, would that be thought, okay? And that's why, if it's, if it's department heads, then, yeah, I think that's what she knew was getting it too.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, I wasn't thinking about a random EMT or, yeah. No, I'm, I'm thinking the same way.
I, I think though, that maybe you might want to include, you know, one of the hourways in this.
Well, let's, let's hold, we'll take a look and we can explore who, who reasonably can serve on this committee.
Yeah.
Um, because I understand where you, you are coming from, that may or may not apply to us, so, um, you know, at this point, we don't have to make a decision on who.
Right, right.
But let's at least have a plan, you know, a way forward, um, so that we can, we can move in that direction.
Okay. Sounds like a good strategy, regardless, we'll at least have a task force taking a good and hard look. So, and I like your thought of not having a need or a reaction. We know the costs are high, it's kind of the same thing with the EMS, we can't have any jerk reaction, or we'll all probably be regretting it down the road, kind of thing.
Driving ourselves to the bit.
Yeah, so do you want to kind of go over what the current two plans are, start there, so?
I can.
Because I know you're kind of wanting to make that decision of, but can we stick with these two for now? And then reconsider next year what some of the other plan options might be.
And that would be my recommendation, just stick with what we have right now, just because, um, you know, you're, there hasn't been any employee input either on, on changing those plans, so I don't think that that's a fair tactic to take. And mainly, you know, if you change plans, if you're going to try to save some money, it's going to end up coming out of the pockets of the employees. So, um, because basically, as you find plans that are lower in cost, it's just increasing the out-of-pocket and, and the deductible. So, but right now, we do offer two plans, one is a high, um, is a PPO plan. And we're almost evenly split as far as employees, you know, which ones.
Half on one, half on the other.
And it really kind of depends on preferences, um, and I just opened up the wrong thing.
Are you and Jonathan on the same plan by chance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and, um, also learned that we can't discuss with them what plan.
Okay.
That's part of it, so.
I'm happy to volunteer.
More or less me wanting to ask you. More or less wanting to ask you questions.
Yeah, but, so.
That's a, I'm glad to know that, I didn't know that.
I, I just learned that, so, um, I, I'm trying to be very careful, and I.
So we have some employees on each.
Yes, if you refer to someone being on the other type of plan, you can't say who, but you could say, and you have people on that plan.
Exactly, yeah, we have people on both plans at all different levels.
Okay.
Basically, right now, um, the PPO plan is a $750 individual deductible and a $1,500 family deductible. There's a co-insurance of 80% in, um, paid by insurance and then 20% by the individual after the deductible is met. On the out-of-pocket maximum is $3,250 for an individual and $6,500 for a family. Now, those out of network are those, the deductibles and the out-of-pockets and the co-insurance all change if you're, um, if you go out of network. So, United Healthcare, for the most part, I don't know that people have an issue finding network, but they don't necessarily complain to me, so, um, that may or may not be an issue.
I was just on United, and it's pretty far-reaching as far as the network goes.
So, and then, um, they have, on the PPO plan, you have a copayment. So when you go to the doctor, you know you're going to pay $15, um, or 25 for just a regular office visit. If there's a specialty office visit, it goes up to 30 or 50, um, and then if it's out of network, then you're paying a percentage. They're, UHC is really pushing the virtual visits as well, and those are actually really, um, cost-effective. So, for instance, those on this plan, if they have a virtual visit, it doesn't cost a thing. The urgent care is $75, and emergency room visit is $250, and then inpatient hospital, they're paying 20% after the deductible is met, so.
Up to that $32.50.
For an individual, or $6,500 for a family. And then they have some different tiers for prescriptions. They really try to, um, drive people to those, uh, the first tier, uh, like the generics, that type of thing. But when you start getting into those really specialty, specialized medications, they'll, they'll have to pay. Like, um, it's a $10, $30, and $50, um, or up to, up to $100 on the prescriptions. But if I remember right, I think that the super specialty ones were like, internet rejection medications and that sort of thing. So then on the PPO, or I'm sorry, on the HSA plan, or it's a high deductible, um, plan, it's, and I'm just going to do the in-network one, the deductible is $2,800 for an individual and, um, it's $600 for a family. And then, then it's a 80% co-insurance, paid by insurance and 20% by the individual. So their out-of-pocket mix is like $4,300, $4,350, and for an individual, and $8,700 for a family. But then it changes, uh, when you go to the copayments, um, the individual or the family is paying a percentage of the cost of the visit. So if it's a, um, primary care physician, it's 10 or 20%, and if it's a specialty, it's, again, 10 or 20%. You do have to pay for virtual visit, then 20%, also 20% for urgent care, emergency room, and inpatient hospital. So, but the, um, I will say, uh, the nice thing is the town is putting money into an HSA account. It's a hundred, a thousand five hundred for individual and $3,000 for a family, and we do that on a monthly basis. So it'd be $125 a month for an individual, $250 a month for a family. And so then you can just use that money, I mean, in my, my case, we've had some different things come up, we just use the money that was deposited in the HSA to pay off those other bills. And then, for those people that are on the HSA, um, plan as well, you can put money into that account, pre-tax, and build that account up, which is nice, up to a certain tax amount, I think it's six or seven thousand dollars. If you go over, then you start getting the p-tax up, but.
And is that invested into the market? Do they have control over that?
No, it's just, it just goes into the savings, it's like a savings account. There's no investments or anything, it's just, you know, so like, we put, we put extra money in our, our house savings account, because we know we have some, some extra bills that might not cover, however, from that monthly payment or the monthly deposit, so we just put it in there and we take it out.
Grant's company, the HSA, you can actually invest it if you want.
And that might be, you have to look at the, the actual rules, I mean, we've got our HSA, um, most people have it with us since here. I think we have one that had an existing HSA that we just put money into in our, um, in our bank, so. The prescriptions again are 20%. So, now, if you're, so those are the two plans that we have, and those are the two plans that I recommend moving forward. I provided you all of the plans, so you can take a look at them and see, you know, how, how, uh, how the employees would be affected versus how much the town would be saving.
So is the HSA, since we put money in, is that the one that costs the employee more if they're part of that plan? Like, they pay $50 a month versus?
No, for both plans, our employees are paying $25 per paycheck. For a family plan, it's just the individual, they pay $1 a year, and that's it. So, the cost of the town, the PPO plan is more expensive than the HSA plan, and that, even if you factor in the amount that we're putting into the HSA accounts, it's still lower than the PPO plan.
Okay.
But you also, I mean, I think we offer the, my guess is in, um, you know, when, when those two plans were set up, you know, you may have somebody that has a lot of health, health issues, because their employees go to the doctor a lot, where they're, um, the HSA may not cover all those doctor bills once it starts, you know, building up. So for them, a $20 copay is a lot cheaper than, you know, the 20%. You know, if you're fairly healthy and you're not making a lot of visits, or you're young, you know, the HSA plan is probably the way to go. So I think it was, I think the original intent was just to, you know, give the employees options based on their specific health situations, yeah, so. But that's basically the two plans in the nutshell.
And as we were going to change next year and offered four plans or different plans?
Yeah, we can change, we can choose the different plans, but we can only offer maximum of two.
Okay, so enrollment, is that about fall time?
Yeah, enrollment's going to, going to start like October, and so this is what we're, this is why they've got some hard deadlines as far as, you know, us making choices, because they're preparing information to get out to the employees, so we make sure the employees get signed up, signed up in time, so that we hit that January 1.
Okay. So if we did have a task force work on this, we'd want recommendations by budget time or soon after?
Yeah, I mean, if we started work over the winter and into the spring, um, you know, we're not going to be able to, the, the trust isn't going to get us the renewal numbers until about the same time, you know, that September timeframe, just all the different factors that they go through. But they do, the one nice thing that the trust does do is have, they have a member day in, usually in April, and obviously this year they didn't, but, um, they have all their members come together, and you can bring as many people as you want, and they go over the status of the trust in different areas that they're, um, they're trying to make, uh, make headway into, and they're becoming very focused on wellness, because the healthier your, your employees are, the better rates you're going to get, because you're not using the insurance as much.
Yeah.
So, um, just taking a, a focus on, on the whole employee, not just healthcare or dental or vision.
Yeah.
So, I would encourage, you know, I'll, when, as soon as I get that information, I'll put it out again, they usually send it out and invite, but maybe we can grab that committee and take them down as well.
I think that's a good thing for us to have that group look at, because if we could even incentivize some health initiatives, it might help us with our own, you know, the less, less claims we make, yada, yada.
Yeah, one thing we are doing in November, and I need to make, double-check the date and confirm it, but the trust is paying for biometric screenings for all full-time employees, and so we'll get those on the schedule in November. So, and then, that information will not come back to us, it'll, you know, we have confidential, but, um, it can possibly identify some areas that, you know, maybe we have a lot of high blood pressure, so let's get some, some focus on, you know, keeping your blood pressure down, or maybe it's just stress, and, you know, we can, um, do some, have some, you know, targeted education or targeted activities on, on improving wellness, some of the issues.
I know Grant's company, um, if you go do the screening, once a year, you get a $100 Visa card.
Yeah.
Because the screening will often say you need to be on a cholesterol med or, so, preventative care, and their company has lowered their cost on insurance more than the cost of these Visa cards. And it, and it does get you to go in, because you're like, I'll take that 100 bucks.
Again, some people go in, because the trust offered that, you can get up to $75 or $100.
So we have people do it?
Yeah, and it was extended out to spouses and kids over, over 18, defendants over 18. And we would just have a handful, so.
We had a few people do it, yes. I said, we had a few people.
We had some people do it, yeah, but not.
Were you like, I'm getting my 75? Were you going for it, Wayne?
Can we offer any incentive or offer to take the blue shots for employees who are willing to?
Um, I think that's part of, you can actually go and get it, um, it is part of your plan, I think it's free.
I'm getting it free right now. Yeah, so CBS.
Any of the, I will say, any of the trust store chains are pushing. Pushing shots.
They probably get reimbursed more for each one, I do.
We're looking for a motion to continue the existing plan within 2020.
That is what I need tonight, so I can get moving on that, the rest of this stuff is up for conversation, yeah, is, it'll be ongoing for a reason.
Okay. So, any discussion or motions to that effect?
Wayne, do you have any comments?
Oh, that's your word again. I know there's employees that had issues with the plan, and I respect Karen for everything she's done, she's worked well, but, but, I kind of got the impression that mine's made up, or, but, the employee's going to be charged more a year from now, it's just a matter of how much. I guess my concern is, all of the years everybody's worked here, part of them, things employees have done, they take concessions and changes and stuff to keep this cheaper. I used to be on the committee to help negotiate with insurance companies. A long time, a long time ago. And they will negotiate. I mean, it's kind of concessions, people come here, this is really one of the main benefits that the employees get here, here to other places, yeah, other places pay more, but they also get more other stuff, but we don't get that all, all of it, you know? I mean, it's kind of a weight. Sure, so, but, from other people, different things that employees are going to pay no matter what, so I don't know. I guess disappointed that I don't see other employees here.
Yeah, right.
It's like, maybe they don't care, I don't know, I do care, I, I, we fought for this for years, the whole time I've been here. You know, it's part of, uh, you know, a benefit that the employees had. And, and, yeah, I'm not going to be here forever, they ain't going to affect me as much down the road as everybody else, but, um, I'm still, I'll fight till the end.
Well, then I think you should probably be on the committee. And it might be that you do the, the deep dive, Wayne, and get, and show that this is the way we need to be. I mean, I, I don't know what that looks like, I know it gets more expensive every year, but we don't bring in any more revenue.
We've done that in the past, and taken no raises, and offered to give it back, and we didn't insurance, we didn't hype it up.
Well, maybe that's the other thing we discover, is that the employees would rather have that than, you know, and it, and it could be that we can afford to do both.
We, I think, have we traditionally raised the employee contribution, for instance, PPO is a dollar a year for?
All, all insurance, no matter which plan you're on, the employees are paying $1 per, per person, for a full-time employee. They're paying $25 per paycheck if they have a family, so they'll be spouse, children.
Is it astronomical, once you add the $250 to the HSA, is there an astronomical difference?
It's about $4,000.
A year for, per employee or?
Per, yeah.
Per difference in the play, like?
Different, between the, I know with the HSA, it's about $4,000.
So if we have six or seven on the PPO times 4,000 more?
Yeah, and I can do, I mean, that's the number that's coming to my head, because I did the calculation a while ago, but I don't remember if it was per single employee or if it was a family, so. I can get you that number, I'll get you that number tomorrow.
Yeah, I just, I just want us to do a deeper dive, I'm totally okay with sticking with the two plans we have. Maybe there's even a better plan, or, um, there's a way to somehow figure it out. Because we, we don't compete as well on wages as we compete on insurance. I definitely think we have a, a really good benefits package, whereas maybe our compensation package isn't quite as good. I think police especially could speak to that, um, because I know there's other department, police departments paying a lot better that might not have as good as insurance, but they have a higher wage, so then you can afford to pay for the insurance.
Yes, their pension system that we have the option to be on, that we don't, you know, get it.
Well, and someone from your department definitely needs to participate in this, because you guys do have a different, um, set of, your package is a little different than, say, Bob's department, right, or an EMS full-time employee.
If you consider raising this to, to an outreach stage, then you're going to have some employees in town who's going to base a show out of the door.
No doubt, but maybe it's a reasonable stage, like, would it be reasonable for the single people to pay $50 a month? Like the family ones are, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Right, but we do know that every year, the benefits line and the budgets is the one going up, up, up. The other ones have remained pretty steady, but our revenue's not going up, up, up. You know, and granted, we're capped with property tax caps, but it's, it really hurt us this year in the EMS department, because Kathy wasn't taking insurance. Then all of a sudden, that line item went from 60-some thousand to 90-some thousand, and we were all like, holy crap.
That's why, I mean, that's where you saw the giant jump, you know, when, or, I think, lots of, for lots.
Yeah, do you, do you remember the meeting some years ago when we looked at insurance with Ralph? Ralph Winters was part of that, and he says it costs us $6.80 per hour per employee to provide the current insurance.
I remember something about.
Well, that $6.80 per hour per employee is probably closer to, if it's about, I figured in my head, when we looked at the EMS one, 30-some thousand per employee is what that benefits line item was. Now, it included a few things. Yeah, that Karen said weren't just health insurance, but let's say it's 30 of the 33,000. $30,000 is 15 bucks an hour now per employee that it costs. That's how far it's come from Ralph, when Ralph Winters was on council to now, from $6.80 an hour to 15. It's unfortunate, but it is what it is also. So, it actually, in some cases, probably costs us more to insure the employee than pay the employee, which is just whack. But that employee getting paid 13 an hour might be happy with 13 an hour, because he gets such a great insurance package, I don't know.
And to, I did the calculation real quick, it's about $775 difference between, for an individual between the PPO and the HSA, and that's including the town's contribution, it's about $1,500 for an employee and child, and an employee and spouse, and then it's $3,750 for a family, between the two. Pardon?
A year, right, per year you're talking?
Per year, yes.
Jimmy, I, I think the actual benefits in ones, isn't that more like 20? Well, I guess it goes up to, if you're a family, it's 28, maybe? Uh, 28,000 a year for the actual cost, after you take out the employee contribution.
Yeah, I got it.
Is it 28? I was thinking 24 for some reason, but now that I think about it.
So 28,000 for a family, divided by 12 months, costs $2,333 a month to provide that package, right, is what we're saying? It's a lot of money.
Well, and the average whole year is 2,000 and maybe hours. So, how old are you, is this? Um, it is 13.
Yeah, 13.
13, 46, nothing.
Yeah, so it's about doubled since Ralph Winters made that comment. And Ralph was on council, what, eight years ago? That's crazy that insurance can, what a scam that industry is. That's true, though. But I'm not saying we should pull, Wayne, I was right there fighting with you when I remember one of our council members saying they should be lucky they even have insurance, and I was like, oh, no, no, no. Yeah, and I was, I fought like a demon woman over that, because I didn't feel like we paid enough in wages and that at least our insurance and benefits made up for it, and I don't regret that one bit.
I mean, it sounds like we have a lot of work put out for us for next year, but I mean, I would be willing to make the motion that we continue the existing two plans through 2020.
Twenty-twenty. And I, and I assume without changing any cost to the employee or, you know, continuing with what it costs the town. Okay. And Bill, you seconded that?
The town was already increased rate in, um, premium increase for all people.
From the insurance company. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed that are in here? Okay. So we got that out, right?
Do you have any problem with the two plans you offered? People with you, um, various plans.
Well, we had any people?
Well, do you have any couple of the current plans?
More people, one point. I, I don't know that anybody did. I mean, I felt there was a problem in the beginning when they offered, uh, you know, the guy sat right in me and told us we're going to get like blood work done first one of the year. You know, free blood work testing. And one time it happened and it never happened. I just feel that was just, I have a kid. I have, uh, issues today. They sent me a letter here, probably six months ago. I had to change my instrument. But they said, we're not going to pay for that. But I will give it another different. My doctor gave me a prescription to buy this one. Why was he giving me a prescription to buy this one? I don't tell me that I'm going to pay for it. I mean, maybe all insurance companies like that, I don't know. I, like I said, I know there's a couple of employees that are happy with, you know, they have the same signature action. Man, but we're under the gun right now for the next year. And that's the purpose of the task force. After the first of the year, the moving forward, it makes, look at everything and make the changes or corrections or bring, bring everything in and let's put it on the table.
Right.
And could we survey the employees? Are you happy with
Yeah.
your insurance plan and also what it costs you? Because I imagine, I mean, right now, I would think they'd be pretty happy about the cost.
Yeah. Well, and, and the issues that are coming up about the instrument or about the blood work. If you let me know, I can take that to the insurance and get an explanation for you. Which I think I got an explanation for you on the blood draw because unfortunately, when we change insurance companies, the insurance laws changed at, uh, right about the same time. So that caused a whole lot of confusion across the board. So your one, your one blood draw, three per year, is just a general, not diagnostic, just like a wellbeing check.
Oh, I know. I've been around.
Okay. Well, then, I don't, then you know, but then you can't, then you can't blame the insurance company for that. It's an insurance industry-wide.
Industry-wide, right.
It's industry-wide. It changed from it being of, when you went, would have your blood drawn. If they coded as diagnostic, you're going to get charged for that.
Well, but some of that though, it was, is, uh, I think what the coding is, there's arguments between, and that's really nothing to do with the fact whether it was a non-free blood draw that year. Is the problem was with what you're, some of that with what you're talking about with coding. These arguments between the insurance companies and the, whether it's the hospital, doctor's office. I said, we coded it like this and they're saying, no, they didn't. Nobody wants to admit they're, they coded it wrong.
Again, I can't address issues if I don't know about it. And I'm happy, I mean, if you come in and ask, I will get you in contact with the insurance companies. But it doesn't make it to me.
Blood laws, you know, that's what everybody tries to go with, the general stuff that you do that normally do, you know? I say, I'm not the only one, okay?
Oh, no, I know. It, it gets to me, but it's, it doesn't, I'm not told directly. So.
But if you don't know about it, you can't.
I can't do anything. No.
But even up to today, we haven't had any, even for general stuff.
You haven't had?
For, for the blood draw. I switched, I would have sent it to one place because, you know, it costs that. I told, if my blood gets wrong, I won't stand over here. It's a lot cheaper. I think it's over there. That's the organization for that, the health.
All those poor little kids have no idea what they're in for one day to have to talk about insurance. It's going to be like fifty bucks an hour per person when they're old enough to get it.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All right.